With everybody being so quiet, I guess I should start this meeting. All right. My things in order. Welcome, Happy New Year to everybody. For those that we have not seen, have a full house. What we normally do this evening is start with our opening ceremony. For the record, it is January 17th and we're officially beginning, calling this meeting to order at 7:08 PM. So we will start our meeting and please join Mrs. Fowler in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, where only nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Thank you very much. Now if you would also please silence all cell phones and any electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you. And I would also ask that you join me in a moment of silence and as you have that moment of contemplation, please keep in your thoughts and minds, we have some significant losses in our AISD community over the recent time and the holidays. So just keep our hurting AISD family and family members in those thoughts. Thank you. All right. So now the first item on our agenda is the program and presentation, student performance by Butler Elementary Star Choir. Ms. Foster.
Arlington's MLK Celebration is going to conclude this year with the MLK Youth Extravaganza. The program is going to feature singing, drumming, dancing, storytelling, and stepping. The mass choir is comprised of 23 elementary schools and tonight, we're pleased to present a preview. Representing the mass choir is the Butler Star Choir, who's fifth and sixth graders. I rehearse once a week. They've performed across the community and area festivals and last year performed the National Anthem at UT Arlington for the Festival of Ideas. Their director is Teresa Francis. Whitney Johnson, tonight's soloist, originally from Florida, has performed in Prague and Vienna and for the past three years, has been music teacher at Thornton Elementary. In addition to school music, she serves her church as the children's worship leader. Help us welcome Butler Elementary Star Choir with Joshua "Fit the Battle" of Jericho.
Joshua "Fit the Battle" of Jericho. Jericho, Jericho. Joshua "Fit the Battle" of Jericho and the walls came tumbling down.
You may talk about your king of Gideon. You may talk about your man of Saul. There's none like good old Joshua at the Battle of Jericho.
Joshua "Fit the Battle" of Jericho. Jericho, Jericho. Joshua "Fit the Battle" of Jericho and the walls came tumbling down.
Up to the walls of Jericho, he marched with spear in hand. Go blow those ram horns, Joshua cried, 'cause the battle is in our hands.
Joshua "Fit the Battle" of Jericho. Jericho, Jericho. Joshua "Fit the Battle" of Jericho and the walls came tumbling down.
Then the ram horns they begin to blow and the trumpets begin to sound. Then Joshua commanded the children to shout and the walls came tumbling down.
Joshua "Fit the Battle" of Jericho. Jericho, Jericho. Joshua "Fit the Battle" of Jericho and the walls came tumbling down. And the walls came tumbling, tumbling down. And the walls came tumbling down. And the walls came tumbling, tumbling down. And the walls came tumbling down. Woo!
That was impressive. Elementary, that was impressive. And, oh, of course, and teacher, yes. For great, great instruction. I'd also like to take a moment, one of our student performers, I don't know if the mom is here, is, where?
Heidi.
Okay, Heather.
Heather.
Heather, oh, there you are, you're right in front of me. She's here tonight, she's former legal counsel for our school district and it is her birthday tonight, so happy birthday!
But it's 15, he's sixth grade, that's up.
Yes, yes, they grow fast. Wonderful performance, what a great way to kick off our back to business here this year. So thank you again to those Butler Stars, that was amazing. All right, we're going to move on into the next section, which is the Student of the Month. And if we could please have Principal Roddy come down from Martin High School to introduce her student and share information about her student.
President Reich, Dr. Cavassos, Board of Trustees, I would like to recommend Katherine Kahutek for the High School Student of the Month from Martin High School. Katherine is a top student, she's ranked as 21 of a class of 784. Her current GPA is a 4.0 on a four-point scale and a 4.75 on a five-point scale. She is a member of the following honor societies, the National Honor Society, the Spanish Honor Society, the Science Honor Society, and the Math Honor Society. Katherine is also involved in several activities that demonstrate her multi-dimensional interest at Martin, including, she's the Features Editor for the Warrior Post, she's the President of the Martin Book Club, she's a member of our Academic Decathlon Team, and she's the President of the Spanish National Honor Society. She was recognized as an AP Scholar with Distinction by the College Board and scored a three or higher on 11 AP tests at the conclusion of her junior year. She is currently taking six AP classes her senior year, which she will test for this spring. Obviously, she's a determined student who speaks of herself with great humility. She states, "My greatest weakness is I never turn work in late, but I wait sometimes until I can no longer put things off." On the flip side, even though I do procrastinate, I will put maximum effort into whatever I'm doing. For instance, I may wait until the night before to write an essay, but I promise it will be an essay worthy of an A. Katherine says that a film that changed her way of thinking was Star Wars, and as it has so many others. She says that after she watched all the Star Wars movies, she was never the same. She finally had a cool female idol, Princess Leia, a strong female character in what seemed like a man's world. Although the films are science fiction, Princess Leia inspired Katherine's determination to become a mechanical engineer. She states if she could have a one-on-one conversation today with someone she greatly admires, it would be Tony Baxter. He is one of Disney's top Imagineers who helped to design one of the Disney parks. Katherine's career goal is to become an Imagineer and speaking with Baxter would allow her to find out the ins and outs of that occupation. This spring Katherine will take, is looking forward to going with other journalism staffers from Martin High School. They're planning a trip to New York to attend a conference at Columbia University. The students have planned this trip with their sponsor during the fall semester. Katherine says that she believes that it is important to lead by example and that is what she strives to do in all areas of her life. A mission trip her freshman year taught her the importance of being understanding and helpful to others. Katherine Kahutek exemplifies all the cultural tenets that our campus and our district promotes. She is a risk taker, she takes ownership of her learning, she responds positively to differences, she makes every interaction count, she puts others first, and she gets better every day. For all of these reasons, I am proud to recommend Katherine Kahutek as the District Student of the Month from Martin High School.
I also just found out her uncle is my dentist.
So it's a good thing you said all those nice things. Well Katherine, welcome. Congratulations, and would love to hear any words that you may have and also to acknowledge anybody that you would like to, that's here tonight.
Well, first off, I would love to thank my parents. Both of them just encourage me in everything I do and support me in my dreams, no matter how crazy they may be. Working for Disney is not an easy occupation to get into, so I'm really thankful that they support me in that. And then also, I'd like to thank everyone else who's here with me, my sister Amanda, and then my grandparents are here, a couple who's back as well. And then I'd also just like to extend a thanks to all of my teachers, my church leaders, and all of my close friends who have always encouraged and supported me and helped me become the person that I am today. Thank you.
Wonderful. Well, if you would indulge us for just a moment, Dr. Cavassos and myself would like to come down, we have a couple of items for you.
So, let me turn the mic this way, Spence wants to make sure it's all recorded. So, you see, I'm wearing a pin, Dr. Cavassos says that most of the other trustees are, we won't call you out.
Forgot my pin.
These are pins that we only wear and we present to those that are very special and have done some amazing things in our eyes as a board. You are one of those. Thank you for being an outstanding student. Please feel free to memorialize that pin however you choose. You can wear it day in and day out, or just when you look at it, just know that it is a reminder of our appreciation for you, leading by example, setting the example in tenor and tone of what an amazing student is in our district. So thank you very much.
And Katherine, this is another small token of our appreciation. Thank you for demonstrating such excellence in our schools and for demonstrating those cultural tenets that we all try to live by. You're a great example and leader for many, many students in our district. So congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Well done.
So moving on, this is a great, I love the beginning of this year, this is wonderful. Moving on, this is a very exciting portion as well, the Martin Luther King Celebration, the Art and Essay Winners' Announcement. It is the MLK Month and we have lots of activities going on this weekend. Ms. Burdo, Mrs. Burdo, could you please, I'll get it right, and lead us into acknowledging who these individuals are?
Dr. Reich, Dr. Cavassos, members of the board, the Arlington ISD is honored to be a part of the Arlington MLK Celebration every year and to serve as the hosts for this year's 30th Anniversary Celebration. The four-day celebration begins tomorrow with the Advancing Dream Banquet and continues Saturday with the MLK Step Show and Poetry Meet Jazz, and Sunday with an ecumenical service. The celebration culminates with several events on Monday, including the Day of Service, a festival in the City Hall Plaza, and the Youth Extravaganza, which you had a preview of earlier this evening. More information about all of the events is available online at arlingtonmlk.com. As part of the MLK Celebration, we are honored to recognize the winners of the Art and Essay contests. Students were challenged to create, write, and reflect on this year's theme, Building Harmony, Celebrating Diversity. We had more than 500 students participate in the Art and Essay Contest this year. Students, when we call out your name, please come to the front and be recognized. We'll start with the third place art winner, who wins a $500 scholarship. Angelina Santa Benes from Barnett Junior High. She'll come forward. Oh, okay, sorry. These were written backwards. So we'll just, we'll go ahead and start with Angelina. Angelina actually won first place, which is the $1,000 scholarship. In addition to having her artwork framed that will hang at the celebrations and here in the Administration Building later, it's also on all of the shirts for the weekend's Second place art winner cannot be here today, Kiara Price from Seguin High School. Mr. Nguyen will show off Kiara's artwork. Mr. Nguyen coordinates the art contest every year and he is also one of the co-chairs for this year's celebration. Our third place art winner is Juliana Wilkerson from Shackelford Junior High. Juliana will receive a $500 scholarship. Congratulations to all of our art winners. We also have our essay winner here this evening, Denise Miller from Martin High School. Denise will be recognized at several events and her essay appears in the program booklet that will be handed out at all events. On behalf of the entire Arlington MLK Celebration Committee, thank you for celebrating our student participants here this evening.
That is fantastic. Congratulations, students, on your awards and obviously, out of over 500 submissions, that's a steep, steep odds and you're at the top, so congratulations to you personally. Congratulations to all of the students that participated. And I would be remiss if I did not also acknowledge Mr. Nguyen, Mrs. Burdo, Mr. Peralis, and all of the other AISD folks that are participating in coordinating the MLK Celebrations this year. Mr. Stringer, Mr. Anderson?
Barbara Keaton.
Barbara Keaton, okay, okay, Ms. Keaton, thank you. Yeah, I'm going to leave names off. It is a tremendous effort, for those that don't know, and it is a rotational opportunity for different organizations to lead and host a particular year. And so this year is AISD's rotation, so it is a lot of work involving likely thousands of students as well as individuals from around our community and different organizations. It's tremendous. If any of you have the time this weekend to get out to some of those events, I strongly encourage you to consider that. It's amazing, the wonderful things going on in our community to celebrate such an amazing, amazing individual as MLK. So thank you again for all of your work internally and to our students who really make this weekend something very special. All right. We will now move on, this is a little awkward, it's School Board Recognition Month and so we're being recognized, so I will just zip it there and turn it over to...
Don't worry, we'll do it for you. And it is School Board Appreciation Month, so Dr. Reich, Dr. Cavassos, members of the board, congratulations. We wanted to just thank you for School Board Recognition Month as a great time to honor your hard work and dedication to the thousands of children that are in the care of the Arlington Independent School District. It's become tradition for our team in Communications to work hand-in-hand with Mr. Nguyen, Lynn Nguyen, you guys just met him, to select a school to bring to life a theme that represents what this honor is all about. So this year's theme is planting seeds of success. School Board members, for those of you in the audience, in case you're not aware, shoulder enormous responsibilities as advocates for your kids. They face difficult challenges, they make hard decisions, with the overall goal of promoting student achievement across the district. They work as a vital link between the community and the classroom. Our board is responsible for a general operating budget of just over $532 million. They take care of nearly 60,000 students, more than 8,500 employees, at 77 separate locations. We truly appreciate you as the School Board for everything that you do as volunteers, and I think it's important, and I want to emphasize that, as volunteers, to make sure that the enormous job of governing the Arlington Independent School District is done every day with grace. At this time, I'd like to introduce the Crow Elementary Art Teacher, Helen Tran. The Crow Elementary students of all ages worked very hard on that theme this year to bring it to life and present it to you as a special appreciation for School Board Appreciation Month.
Hi, it's a pleasure to be here and to meet everybody and I just want to say again, a thank you and thank you for welcoming me and our Crow students right over here as well. So, good afternoon admins, my name is Ms. Tran and I am excited to be here to represent Crow Elementary and Crow students. Our kids at Crow have shown determination, creativity, and hard work in these eight art pieces that are going to be presented to you today. This year's theme, as has been presented, is planting seeds of success. Now let's dive into what this means to my students and I. Our Crow students and I wanted to represent this through literal and conceptual art with various techniques and mediums to tell our story. Watercolors, wet into wet technique, temperate paints, and colored pencils were all part of this process. I want to start by introducing the piece with the hands and the seeds first. And can I have a student bring it up? Daniel? Daniel Perez is the first piece and he's going to be presenting Mr. Chappa's piece. Don't be shy, go, go, go. Yeah. See, it's time to grow and it requires proper soil and foundation, and that is what you guys as admins provide for us in this district. This piece is a reminder that a whole garden isn't created overnight and neither is a fully-developed mind. But by focusing on the positives and seeing the little seeds that start to peek out from the earth in the form of something new, we can start to see the progress we are making in our students' journeys as individuals.
If you wouldn't mind, why don't you go and stand right in front of Mr. Chappa's nameplate and just face the audience for a little bit? Justin, if you want to go down, you can wait.
Yeah.
And that's kind of how we'll go then.
I'm going to have Mia come up next to bring up the perspective tree. And unfortunately, some students can't be here tonight, so I have some placeholders for certain students. So Mia, can you go pick up the perspective trees? Can I have Amaroth actually pick up Victoria's piece? Victoria can't be here tonight, but she's holding a brain piece. Going on to the perspective trees and brain piece, it represents a seed that can't stay a seed forever. When cared for with nourishing soil, rays of sunlight, and water, they can, they change shape and start to grow. And the same goes for our students here in AISD. As admins, you guys remind myself and my fellow teachers to cultivate growing leaders. Seeing my own student take shape in the environment you pay for us and for them is what makes our job so rewarding. So I'm going to present Ashley and she's going to bring up the next piece. Next is a silhouette figure piece. When a seed flowers, everyone recognizes its beauty. The seed blooms and so does our minds. After a seed undergoes a transformation and takes on a new form, everyone appreciates it for whatever it has to offer. Just like each one of our students' mind has something new, something more to contribute to what surrounds us. And how did it get to this point? With time and transformative change. As my students and I thought of this year's theme, we think the most important seeds of success are the people we meet. One person can change our whole entire life. And each one of you has planted a seed within one of us. Most seeds require good soil and cultivation to grow. Both seeds of failure and seeds of success don't grow without your help. Both AISD diverse and positive culture helps grow strong-minded leaders, and that is all thanks to you all, by the way. So lastly, I present to you these individual abstract pieces. When brought together, it'll show a whole image. So I'm actually going to have Emily go ahead and go next. And the last three unfortunately can't be here, but I'll have some placeholders to hold them up so they can bring it together to show you guys as a whole piece. So these are individual abstract pieces and it represents you guys as individual board members that comes together and bring our district into like cultivation as well.
Hey, it's abstract, it works either way.
All right, and if you guys can turn around for the board members to see. Thank you again for your individual contribution to this district. It has been a pleasure standing up here today to say thank you. I hope you guys enjoy what Crow Elementary R students have to offer and you guys have a wonderful day.
Kids, if you would stay there, we're going to come down and introduce ourselves to you and take some pictures with you. Well, that was really special, thank you very much. It's very nice. Everybody has a certificate as well at your desk. That's wonderful. Well, thank you again. I would just say before we move on, being appreciative of that, but overall, what amazing, what amazing students we have in our district, right? What, I mean, just in the few short minutes we've had this meeting, look at the talent. It's incredible. So proud of our children and I think our future's in good hands. All right, so now we move on to the appointments portion of our agenda, considering the administrative appointments for the positions stated on the agenda. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Reich. I'd like to recommend that the board appoint the individuals discussed in closed session for Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, Assistant Principal for Sam Houston High School, Assistant Principal for Barnett Junior High, Assistant Principal for Jones Academy, and Assistant Principal for Spear Elementary.
All right. I would entertain a motion.
Dr. Reich, I'd move that we accept the administrative appointments.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. We have a motion by Mr. Hibbs, second by Mr. Chappa, to approve the appointments. Any discussion? Make you nervous out there. I think you're okay. Uh, everybody votes in the affirmative, motion carries. Uh, thank you. Congratulations. Dr. Cavazos, please.
Thank you, President Raj, and it's my pleasure to present the new Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, Mr. Barry Fox.
Barry attended Abilene Christian University and Bachelor of Arts in Music Education. Abilene Christian University for Master of Science in Organization and HR Development. Most recently, a senior direct, the Senior Director of Technology Support and Integration, uh, has also served as a Director of Instructional Technology in our district and also in Denton ISD, has been an Assistant Principal in Northwest ISD, and Assistant Principal in Carrollton Farmers Branch, Choir Director and Assistant Choir Director as well. Barry, congratulations.
Thank you, President Raj, Dr. Cavazos, members of the board. Chapter one. First of all, I would like to thank you, uh, for your leadership and your dedication to our students. I'd like to join the many voices that are, are shouting that tonight and this whole entire month, so thank you. You set a high bar, and I hope that I can emulate that in my leadership, uh, for our teachers and students here as well. I'd also like to, uh, specifically thank, uh, Mr. Chad Branham, uh, for bringing me into the district five years ago. I have greatly appreciated your mentorship and your guidance and your leadership, thank you for that. Uh, apparently, Dr. Wertz is making the same mistake he did five years ago, but you're bringing me on, and I, I greatly look forward to our partnership together. Thank you. You see, I love the seeds theme because you've planted seeds, both of you gentlemen have planted seeds in me, uh, things that I don't know if I could see in myself at the time, but you saw that, and I'm greatly, uh, appreciative of that. I'd also like to thank, uh, the Technology Division as a whole for the past five years working with some incredibly passionate people. Uh, the Technology Integration and Innovation Department under the leadership of Steve Simpson, uh, Library and Media Services, uh, with the amazing Julie Moore, and, uh, the Technology Support Department, uh, with the leadership of John Acheson. I can't thank those people enough for the memories that we've made together these past five years, and I look forward to many memories to come, working with them in a different capacity. Uh, I'd also like to thank the two groups that I'm working closely with right now as, as previously the interim and, and now getting to do it full-time. Uh, Connie Wallace and the Curriculum and Instruction Department, her group of coordinators and specialists are extremely dedicated to our students. I love to just, I'm just in awe of what they do every day. And Alita Driscoll and her professional learning team, uh, so positive and so supportive of, of everything that we're doing. I hope that I can, uh, show that in my leadership as well. I'm also very appreciative of their friendship as well, so thanks to those groups. And finally, uh, just want to thank, uh, my family, uh, for their, uh, support, and they've been along every step of the way, through every twist and turn. Some of those were expected, some were not expected, but, uh, they stuck with me through the end, and, uh, I, I love them dearly, and I thank them, and I thank you again for your support. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce the Assistant Principal for Sam Houston High School, Ms. Mirna Vasquez.
Mirna attended the University of Texas Pan American in Edinburgh for Bachelor of Arts in Spanish, University of Texas Pan American for Master of Education and Administrative Education. Most recently, a bilingual ESL migrant language testing coordinator in Irving ISD, has been an Assistant Principal at a Newcomer Center, has been the Title I Coordinator and Parent Involvement Coordinator in Mission ISD, a Senior Education Specialist in the Region One Educational Service Center, and has taught eighth grade language arts, English Language Arts in Mission ISD. Mirna, congratulations and welcome.
Thank you very much. President Raj, members of the board, Dr. Cavazos, thank you. Um, I believe wholeheartedly that, um, God opens doors for you when the time is right, and I think it's, um, up to us really to, um, take that step forward and, um, and walk through that doorway. Uh, and in doing so, I came across a group of great individuals that undoubtedly have the same passion, uh, in education that I have. My children were not able to be here today, but my family and friends who are watching in the digital world, um, have definitely been my support and my guidance in, uh, all the endeavors that I've taken upon, uh, in the education, uh, in my education career. Um, and I really, really want to thank them for that. They have been, uh, with me throughout all this time. Um, I've come a long way, and, uh, I believe that all these obstacles that we come across, um, have really, um, made us or molded us into what we want, we want to be, and, um, have actually ignited a passion in me as well. So, um, I am proud and truly grateful, uh, for being part of, uh, Sam Houston High School that I will call my home. Thank you very much.
Next, I'd like to introduce the new Assistant Principal at Barnett Junior High, Mr. David Downs. David attended U, University of Texas at Arlington for Bachelor of Arts in Interdisciplinary Studies, UTA for Bachelor of Arts in History as well, Southwest Baptist Seminary for a Master of Arts in Christian Education. Most recently, an eighth grade math teacher at Carter Junior High, has been an eighth grade social studies, eighth grade math, and sixth grade science and math teacher in Irving ISD, has been a seventh and eighth grade math teacher in, uh, Oak Cliff as well, has also worked as a sales associate, has worked at, in White Settlement, uh, as a seventh, eighth, uh, grade social studies and math teacher, uh, and has been a retail consultant as well. David, congratulations and welcome.
President Raj, member of the boards, and Dr. Cavazos, I just want to thank you all for this opportunity to serve the students, families, and staff of Barnett Junior High. Uh, I'm honored to have been selected and trusted with the position, and will do my best to serve the students and faculty in order to help raise student achievement. Uh, I'd like to thank many people, uh, that I've, uh, come across over the years who've helped me grow, uh, as an education, uh, and as an individual, who have supported me, uh, in my pursuit of leadership. Uh, first, I'd like to thank, uh, Dr. Cavazos, Beth Hollinger, and Stephanie Hawthorne for seeing my potential and selecting me for this amazing opportunity. I'd like to thank Claudia Herrera, Deborah Falls, Justin Kettler, Alba Brussera, and Dr. Bell for being so supportive of my desire to serve as an Assistant Principal. Uh, they've been wonderful leaders for Carter Junior High and have helped me to become a stronger teacher and leader this school year. Uh, there have been many others at various campuses that I've been able to serve at who have encouraged me and have invested in me, and without the influence of so many, I would not be standing here today. Uh, finally, I'd like to thank my wife, Meredith, who should be sitting here with my son. Uh, my sister-in-law, Shannon, has him in the back, and my mother-in-law, Debbie, who are here to support me. They, uh, my family is everything to me, and, uh, my wife has been incredibly supportive as I've, as I've pursued this, uh, new position. Um, every day I go to work, um, I give my all to my position, uh, so that I can be the best provider for my family that I can be. And as I transition into this new role, I will continue to serve students and their families, uh, and my fellow educators to the best of my ability. Uh, the city of Arlington is my home, Arlington ISD is now my home, and it's my desire that I, both will remain so for many years to come. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce the new Assistant Principal for Jones Academy of Fine Arts and Dual Language, Ms. Marisa Guzman. She attended the University of Texas, uh, at Permian Basin for Bachelor of Arts in Spanish, UTA for Master of Education in Curriculum and Instruction. Uh, most recently, an instructional coach and in KD ISD, has been a fourth grade bilingual teacher for math, science, and self-contained. Also has taught bilingual kindergarten, bilingual kindergarten in first grade, uh, in Irving ISD, has taught first grade bilingual reading recovery, uh, and pre-kindre bilingual and migrant teacher in Midland ISD. Uh, Marisa, congratulations and welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, President Raj, members of the board, and Dr. Cavazos, and the public, for this warm welcome. This opportunity represents the next cha- chapter of my professional career, and I'm delighted. I'd like to thank Ms. Catusca Erador, the Jones Academy family, Dr. Jarco, and Dr. Cavazos for entrusting in me this new role as Assistant Principal of Jones Academy of Fine Arts and Dual Language, and all the responsibilities that come with it. I would also like to extend my appreciation to my own childhood and college teachers and professors, as well as my colleagues and mentors from Millan ISD, Irving ISD, and KD ISD for challenging me to learn and grow professionally. You have pushed me outside of my comfort zone, and it's paying off. In addition, I'd like to thank my family for showing me the importance of hard work and self-discipline. You continue to encourage me to believe that I can accomplish anything I set my mind out to. You are my biggest cheerleaders. Furthermore, thank you Arlington Independent School District. I am honored to be a part of a school district with an excellent reputation, one that promotes continuous improvement for all through rigorous and innovative learning experiences. I am eager to meet the Jones Academy students that shine bright every day, and to be officially a part of the Jones Academy family. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce the Assistant Principal for Spear Elementary, Dr. Kimberly Saffold. Kimberly attended Northwest College for Bachelor of Science in Elementary Education, American College of Education for Master of Education in Curriculum and Instruction, American College of Education for Doctor of Education at Leadership. Most recently, the Academic Dean at Spear Elementary, has also been an elementary math instructional specialist with the Curriculum and Instruction Department here in Arlington, has been a K-8 intervention specialist, has also taught fifth and sixth grade math, science, and has taught third grade, uh, as well. So, Kimberly, welcome. Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you. President Raj, members of the board, and Dr. Cavazos, thank you for appointing me as the new Assistant Principal at Spear Elementary. I'm so very thankful to call Spear as my home, as I serve alongside many amazing teachers and staff members who are truly committed to empowering all of our students in a safe and rigorous learning environment. This is really the fourth year I've served alongside many of our teachers and staff members at Spear. Prior to becoming Spear's Academic Dean, I spent time on the campus in the capacity as the district math instructional specialist. And so I would like to thank Rosa Orozco, Dr. Buell, and Dr. Wertz for seeing the passion I have for campus work and for giving me the opportunity to become Spear's Academic Dean for a year and a half. And now I would like to thank Ms. Elizondo and Ms. Brown for seeing my commitment to the students and staff, and for having the faith in me as I move into this new position as Spear's Assistant Principal. I would also like to introduce my husband and thank him, Ty. He is my best friend. Every day, he is so patient and understanding with me, he supports me and encourages me. He was there with me in my long hours, long, long hours, working on my doctorate. And now, as I spend time working for our students and staff, again, thank, I want to thank each one of you, um, for placing faith in me as I move into this new role so I can continue being a Spear star.
Congratulations again to e- each one of you. I am somewhat blown away, the, the amazing backgrounds and experience that each one of you bring to these new, uh, positions and opportunities for you are going to translate into tremendous opportunities and outcomes for our, our student body. Uh, thank you very much. Um, I, I heard ignited passion planting seeds outside our comfort zone, which is, uh, promoting risk-taking on our cultural tenants, I was trying to do my homework while you were talking, uh, giving it my all with the, the underlying tenant serving the students, and that is what it's all about. Uh, you're like-minded with us and making sure we do everything we can to promote opportunities for, uh, excellent student achievement and experience, so thank you very much. As is our custom, uh, we ask that you follow, uh, Mr. Kale out, out to the lobby so that we, uh, for a receiving line, so that each of us, uh, here can, can meet you and, and welcome you. I would indulge, uh, the audience, please allow the board to go first, uh, so that we can get through and come back in here and, and continue on, uh, with our business. It is seven fifty-six, we will take a brief break, a brief recess, we will come back, uh, by eight fifteen. All right, the time is eight sixteen, we're going to call this, uh, meeting back into session. Uh, next on our agenda is a, a public hearing for the, uh, Texas Academic Performance Report, the Tapper, uh, Report, and I will officially open this public hearing now. Uh, Dr. Cavazos?
Thank you, President Raj, and I'd like to, uh, introduce and welcome to the podium, uh, Dr. Barlow, and Cindy Powell will also help with this presentation, uh, with our Tapper Report. A lot of this information has already been reported and already been addressed, but this is an official, uh, part of, of what needs to be done with the Tapper Report, so with Dr. Barlow, thank you.
Good evening, uh, President Raj, members of the board, and Dr. Cavazos. Thank you for having a few minutes for me to, uh, visit with you this evening about, uh, the Tapper Report. Uh, this is an annual report that we do, uh, pretty much every January, we've already seen a lot of the data, uh, I'll point out a couple more points as we go through. Um, have the slides going on the PowerPoint.
It's up.
There, there they go. Still getting used to this new technology here. So, we'll go ahead and get started, and, uh, the first page here, the first slide here is, what is the Tapper Report? Well, it's the Texas Academic Performance Report, describes the educational performance of a district, uh, in each campus in the district. You'll notice there we've got the number of pages there, just kind of give you the magnitude of it, is, uh, the district report is about twenty-five pages, if you include all the campus, campuses, it's about sixteen-hundred pages, so we're gonna, we're gonna squish about sixteen-hundred pages worth of information down into about thirty slides here in about fifteen minutes. So, um, it is intended to inform the public, uh, about the educational performance of the district and of each campus in relation to the district, the state, and a comparison, uh, comparable group of schools. Some of the measures, uh, that are included in the Tapper Report, and this has morphed over time, uh, so I'm just gonna kind of glance through those real quick, and we'll touch on some of them, we won't do all of them, just because there's, uh, the magnitude, but basically the diff- uh, district performance, district progress, uh, district prior, uh, year, and student success initiative, district participation, district attendance, graduation, and dropout rates, uh, district college career and military readiness, we've heard a lot about that over the last, uh, little bit that has become quite the highlight, uh, district student information, and then district staff information. So, uh, basically accountability rating is also part of that, uh, report, and we've seen these numbers before, uh, just as a quick, uh, glance at them, our district score is seventy-eight, uh, Domain Ones, two A, two B, and three, you see the academic achievement, academic growth, relative performance, and, uh, closing the gaps, you see the numbers there with those, uh, the seventy-three, eighty, the seventy-nine, uh, and the seventy-three. The distinctions are, and there's only one possible distinction, uh, that a district can get, we did not get that, it has to do with the, uh, college readiness. We did not get that. It has to do with the college readiness. A little bit different view on the distinctions there. We got to where we try to compare ourselves to like districts. Basically, the parameters that we use there are districts that have about plus or minus 10% low SAS students. So, we're running around 65 usually. I think this year we may actually be up around 70. So, we'll take all the districts in the state of Texas that are plus or minus that 65%. Usually comes out to about 400 districts, and so within we try to rank ourselves against them. So, you'll see there the rankings, the domain 1, we're at the 21st percentile. So, we do have some work to do there. But I think what's, we need to highlight there is that domain 2A, which is student progress. That's that growth measure. So, really, for me, the growth measure is probably one of the most important measures of all the whole academic system just because if we can say that we're doing better today than we were doing yesterday, I look at that in my personal life, I'm doing better today than I did yesterday. I feel like I'm unsuccessful. So, that domain 2A is a really big deal there. You'll see that that's also the highest score that we have there. We had the 80 there for the domain 2A and just the score part. And then we're in the 73rd percentile, so we're almost in the top quarter there for that group of districts that I mentioned. 2B at the 50th percentile, domain 3 is that 42nd percentile. And then overall, the 42nd percentile. So, moving on, we tried to do a little bit of comparison between last year and this year, and the state doesn't really give us the data with respect to the previous year. So, we had to do some generation of those scores internally. It gets a little challenging because things change, but we try to make that as equitable as we possibly can. Not going to go through all the data points there on the slide, but you can see a lot of the areas there in green. So, we see at the district level, that 17 to 18, we see the domains 2B and domain 3. We had growth there, 3 points and 10 points, and then the overall score there from a 75 to 78, 3 points. And then you'll see similar trends there at the high school, junior high, and elementary level. Did have some losses there in the elementary level. You'll see there some negative numbers where we lost a little bit of ground, the negative 5 in that domain 2A, that's that growth measure again. 2 points in the domain 2B, which is that relative performance, and then the overall negative 1 there for the overall score. So, campus rating summaries, again, we've seen this before, so it's not really anything new. We had high school campuses, we had nine out of nine that met standard. No improvement required. Junior highs, we had 10 out of 10 met standard, no improvement required. And then elementary campuses, we had 50 out of 54 that met standard with the 4 out of 54 that were improvement required. That was Anderson, Patrick, Short, and Spear. So, we get into some of the data. Again, we've seen a lot of this data before, but I want to point out a couple of things as we go through. You'll notice first that we have an upper left-hand corner there that says approaches grade level, and we have the all subjects, and we'll do math, science, reading, and so forth. With the new system, we have an approaches level, a meets level, and a masters level. Just to kind of keep it comparable to what we've done in previous years and just because of the complexity of trying to include so many data points, we're staying with that approaches level right now just because that'll be the comparable score that we've done in the past. As we move forward, we may want to morph that or revamp that and do something a little bit differently. But basically, you'll see there where we have, this is all subjects, students that passed all subjects in 2018 versus 2017. The number I like to focus on is across the bottom there where we see the difference. So, positive numbers mean that we had a little bit of growth there. Negative numbers means that we lost a little bit of growth, or lost some ground there. So, a couple of numbers I would like for you to pay a little bit of attention to there is the all category. We'll see 1% growth there, and then also sped in the ELL category. The reason I want to point out the sped and the ELL is that those are two areas that we've had to focus on over the last couple of years. And you'll see some growth there in each one of the slides, or the majority of the slides there in those two areas. So, in this example, this is all subjects. Had the 1% growth in all students, and then the sped was 5%, and the ELL was 2%. When we move on, same slide, same format there on reading. You'll see a 2% growth in all students, and then 5% in sped, and 3% in ELL. Moving to mathematics, 2% growth there for all students, and then 3% for sped, and then 3% in ELL. And then, again, a majority of the indicators there are positive across the board there. We get to writing, we see a little bit different story just because we lost a little bit of ground there in writing. We know we've had some challenges there, so we're addressing that through our district improvement plan and so forth as far as trying to recapture some gains there. With that all students category, all student group, we lost a point. But you'll notice that the sped, we actually gained 8, and then the ELL, we were actually even there. So, again, sped and ELL has been kind of a focus there for the last several years. And you'll see, we're seeing some gains there in the data. Science, once again, 1% there in all students, sped 1% and 2% ELL. And then social studies, again, a little bit of a loss there, 2 points in the all students, sped the 3%, and then the 2% loss there in ELL. So, I think, I just think overall, when we look at those data, and one of the content areas, that sped and ELL is a highlight that we need to recognize there. As we move forward, we look at distinctions in the designation. So, we had 29 campuses receive at least one distinction. Real quickly, we get those in English Language Arts, math, science, social studies, that top 25% in academic growth, which is basically that 2A that I was indicating a while ago. And then comparable, and then also the closing the gaps, which is that domain 3, and then post-secondary readiness. You can get that post-secondary readiness of both the district and the campus. We didn't get it at the district. There were a couple of campuses that got it. So, I'm not going to read through all the campus names. I'll indicate the distinction that we're looking at, and then I'll let you just kind of glance through the campus names, but I just want to make sure that we recognize those campuses. Takes a lot of hard work to get those because these are comparable schools. So, they're actually competing with schools that have similar demographics to get these distinctions. So, this is the ELLA, or English Language Arts Reading. 11 campuses there. You'll see 3 high schools, a few junior highs, and then several elementaries. We go into mathematics, 13 campuses, several high schools, several junior highs, and then several elementaries. Science, we have 20 campuses, many of the high schools, a couple of junior highs, and many of the elementaries. And then social studies, we had 8 campuses, several of the high schools, several of the junior highs. Please also note that elementary doesn't have social studies, so that's not offered to them. So, this reason, I see any listed there. And then we go into the academic growth, 12 campuses. You'll see some high schools, junior highs, and elementaries represented there. And then closing the gaps, the same thing, 11 campuses. We have Arlington Collegiate, 3 junior highs there, and then several elementaries. And then that last one, the post-secondary readiness, had 9 campuses. You'll see the 1 high school, the 2 junior highs, and 3 or 4 elementary campuses. And that should do the distinctions there. So, we move on to bilingual, and again, we're looking at that approaches grade level. This one, we have the slides there, we put all the subjects on one slide. We have all reading, math, writing, and science. And so, you'll see there growth in most of the areas there. All, in the all student group, we had 3%, I'm sorry, the all test, we had 3%. Reading, we had 6%, math 2%, writing, there again, we had a little bit of a loss there with that 6%, and then science 7%. So, it's our bilingual students. And then the ESL, our other program for our ELL students. There again, the format's the same. The, as far as the growth, pretty much leveled off there. Not quite as significant as what we had there in the bilinguals. So, 0% for all test, and then 0 for reading, 1 for math. Lost a little bit of ground there in writing. And then again, 1 in science, and I lost a little bit there on social studies. We want to point out this district participation mainly just because this has become a really big deal with respect to ESA and the new accountability system is that you have to have 95% of your students participate in the testing program, or there'll be a penalty for that as far as your accountability rating goes. Won't go into the details of how they work out that penalty, but basically, you want to have a high participation rate in your participation with all your testing that you do throughout the year. You'll notice there that we're at 99%, so we're well above that 95%. So, we feel like we're in pretty good shape there. We're going to kind of get away from testing here for just a minute. The attendance rate, you'll see the numbers there again, looking at that bottom row there. Had a little bit of a loss in attendance across the board there. We usually run around 95%, 95 and 1/2%, it's usually in the 95% range. Most of those are in the single decimals, like a .3 or .5, that type of thing. But still had a little bit of a loss in attendance over the last year, or from the last year. But I want to spend just a minute on this slide here. And the reason I wanted to point out those areas a while ago of all students, sped, and ELL is because you may remember a few years ago on our four-year graduation rate, we had a little bit of divergence from the state where we were, had gone down a little bit. But not only had we gone down, but the state had gone up a little bit. And that's the case we never want to see, where we're diverging from the state or from our peers, especially when we're going in the direction, or going down, and the state's going up. So, I wanted to point that out, that when we look at that four-year graduation rate under the current, the current system or the current data, we had an increase there 2.6% for all students. That's a pretty big percentage rate. When we're talking about jumping, you'll notice those increases from the previous slides were like 1%, 2%. When we're talking about the all students group, that's a lot of kids. And we talk about 2.6%, that's a pretty big jump in my mind. And especially when we take into account the way that four-year graduation rate is considered. That's a four-year process. And so, in order to have any sort of increase in your four-year rate, if you start from scratch, you've got to start from 4 years ago, and you've got to work up to the current year. So, if you start right now, you've got to start working in the 4 years from now, you see, you know, those results. And so, the reason I think that's impressive is because this happened within a couple of years instead of waiting, you know, for that 4 years to turn out. So, we hope that as we move on, that we'll even see a better increase there. So, I think that 2.6% significant there. And then when I move over to that sped and ELL, again, we had a concentration on sped and ELL graduation rates over the last couple of years in our district improvement plan, that I think that's a big deal there. And those are pretty big gains, they're not just the 2.6%, but we have the, what is it, the 8.5% and then 8.4%. I think those are big gains in those two areas. And those are 2 of our critical student groups that has some struggles there. So, we've made some improvements there. I won't spend there as much time on the rest of the graduation dropout rate information, but the four-year dropout rates, you'll see that with the negative 1.6. And we want to see that. That's on these, we want to see a negative there because we want to see fewer dropouts. So, maybe one thing that's not quite as apparent here is that there's actually 4 students, or 4 groups that students fall into when we talk about the graduation and dropout rates. You have students that graduate, students that are continuers, students that got a GED, and the students who dropped out. The only 2 pieces there that I'm showing is the graduation, the cohort graduation rate and the dropout rate. So, those won't necessarily add up to 100%. So, if you're looking at the slides, they don't necessarily add up to 100%. If I was to include, if I was to include all 4 categories, the continuers, graduates, GEDs, and the dropout rates, all of that should add up to 100%. So, just kind of a note there that we don't show all of those data there. When we move into the 5-year graduation rates, again, you'll see the, kind of that trend that we're talking about. As far as a few years ago, we had a little bit of a dip. So, this is still some of those students in the 5 years, the 4 years where we saw the increase. So, we're pleased with that, this 5-year rate. We still have a little bit of work to do on that. And then the 5-year dropout rate, the same thing. You'll see those are kind of inverses there again because we saw the dropout rate, I'm sorry, the graduation rate go down, the dropout rate went up. That's still kind of a holdover, I think, from that a couple of years ago when we talked about that 4-year rate. Moving on to student data, and I think Ms. Powell is going to cover some of this information.
Thank you. Good evening. Has been said already, a lot of this data is older data that is accumulated and reported in one place through the Tapper Report. So, in a number of cases, we've talked about this data in different senses, whether it's developing budgets or other reporting. So, in the demographic data, in the financial data, the data is presented for AISD in one column and the state on the next. And the financial data is actually, you get to it by clicking the link that's on the last page of the Tapper Report. Used to, it was part of the Tapper Report, now then it's connected by a link. So, we've got several slides we'll show there. One thing I'll point out on this is that, especially when we get to the financial data, it's all funds, it's all accounting funds. Usually, when we look at how efficient we are and want to understand where we are relative to other districts, we look at just the general operating fund. That's the one place where you get everybody truly kind of apples to apples. When you are looking at financial data on a basis of all funds, different districts may have different bond programs going at different times or different grants. And so, it's not quite a real base level comparison. So, the data you see is all funds here because that's the way it's presented for the state in the Tapper Report that you get to when you click that link. So, for student data, this data, student and staff data came from the 2017-18 school year. It's captured on the last Friday in October. We had 61,020 students in membership, and membership is just a tick different than actual enrollment. Membership are the kids who are actually eligible for state funding. Our enrollment number is actually a little bit higher than this by about, I think there are about another 56 kids in enrollment. We serve some children who may come to us strictly for some special service, a speech service or something of that nature. And so, they actually spend the bulk of their day in some other setting, and they come to us for that specific special ed service. And so, they are not here with us for at least 4 hours, and so, they are not eligible for funding. So, this is pretty close to our total enrollment. The last 3 lines on this slide are kind of important. Economically disadvantaged, you can see that our percent of economically disadvantaged kids is a good bit higher than the state. Also, we have more English language learners than the statewide average, and a higher percent of at-risk kids than the statewide standard or average. The at-risk kids are identified through 13 different criteria that the state sets forth. And English language learners or limited English proficiency is one of those 13 criteria. So, when you see that we have a higher percentage of students who are English language learners than the state average, that also tracks to the at-risk category. You see our, the breakdown of our student population by ethnicity. We are a very diverse district. In terms of staff data, this was also captured in October of 2017. We had a total of 8,283 employees that year. And you see the breakdown there in the various employment categories. And you see that we track very closely with state percentages. Half of our staff is made up of teachers. The professional support staff is where you'll find counselors and librarians and diagnosticians, and a number of people who are also directly serving children, but they're outside the classroom. In terms of central administration, we have about half the statewide average in terms of percent of our employment base assigned to central administration. Students per teacher, 14.7. That's a little bit less than the statewide average. And when we look at years' experience of our teachers, we have, our teachers have 10.3 years of experience compared to the state average of 10.9. So, we're right at the state average. And then in terms of the number of years that teachers are with us, have been with us, we're just slightly higher than the statewide average. And then the percentage of our total staff that is assigned to functions that directly serve the classroom, 64%, and that's the same as the state level. In terms of expenditures, again, these are all funds. We begin to see how that particular representation impacts us this year because of our bond expenditures. We have a very large increase in our bond expenditures in the 2016-17 year, which is the fiscal year that this data is from. And so, I'll show you a couple of places on the next slide where you can see how that influences how we compare to the state. In total, our operating expenditures are $10,492, and that is a little bit higher than the state. Again, some of our bond expenditures are impacting that. In terms of classroom instruction, again, you see that we are spending more than the state average. And we track pretty similarly in other categories throughout. Until you get down to general administration, you can see that we spend less than half of the state average. And then that plant services and operations, you see that $1,890 expense. What you're seeing there is the beginning of us spending a lot of bond money on the renovation work. The first year and a half or so of the bond program, most of our expenditures were for new construction, which fall, which don't get captured in this analysis. new construction, which fall, which don't get captured in, in this analysis. But as we move more into renovation work, where we've done lots of mechanical upgrades, flooring upgrades, electrical upgrades, those fall into that function 51, which is the plant maintenance and operations, and so that drives that expense per student up since when we look at it on an all-funds basis. So this slide takes that same information, takes those dollars and looks at our expenditures on a percentage basis compared to actual dollars, and so here again, we begin to see the impact of the larger purchases out of the bond funds. Our classroom instruction expenses as a percent of all expenses for all funds is 50, about 54% compared to the state average of 56%. Again, we track pretty closely on most categories until you get to the general administration category. Again, our percent of our budgets spent on general administration is less than half of the statewide percentage, and then again, you see in that plant maintenance and operations, it appears that we're spending much higher, and on an all-funds basis we are, and that's because of those bond funds. The instructional expenditure ratio is about 61% compared to the state average of 63%. Once again, that's a reflection of the bond funds being included in this particular analysis, and when you look at our fund balance as a percent of our budget, it's about 36%, which is a good bit higher than the state percentage of 27%. And this is just, the links you'll find actually on the last page of the TAPA report, and we have in your packets this evening, we printed that financial report, and it's attached, actually, I believe it's the very, very last page in your packet. So if someone goes to TA's website and they look up a TAPA report for any district in the state and go to the last page, they'll find the link here, they can click on and go to that district's audited financial data that they consider to be part of the TAPA report. So with that, Dr. Barlow and I will be happy to answer any questions you have.
Are there trustees that have any questions? Mr. Hogg?
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Reich. Mainly Dr. Barlow. Ms. Powell, you can have a break. From years ago. Dr. Barlow, you mentioned some of the early things on those reports that we get judged on, like college career readiness, and we know we're not getting data from all the state to be able to track on those type of things. It's really hard to track some of those students, and we lose some of those. What other pieces in there, as we're in this legislative session right now, are we not getting the data on correctly from the state that the state could definitely increase their data? Because we're judged on TAPA a lot. It's the thing that all the political pundits in the state, everyone uses and says, we're tracking TAPA, but what are the pieces of TAPA that the states made it where we can't even truly feel 100% confident in the data that we have?
So the, the, the big one that we're working on right now is the TSI data, so that's a, basically a college entrance exam.
School, Texas School Initiative, correct?
Absolutely. And so that one has been quite challenging, maybe just a brief overview of that, is that, so students, if you're not a, a, a testing site, which we have just now become a testing site, so this will alleviate some of that, but if you're not a testing site, so they go to another entity, say to TCC or to TCU or somewhere else to test, then they, that college or university controls that data. They submit that data to the Higher Education Coordinating Board, the Higher Education Coordinating Board, and submits that data to TEA. And because it's kind of outside of our realm, we don't have any control or can't see that those data or anything like that. That's been quite the challenge this year, so that's one piece of it.
And, and that could be, someone signs in for just a, like, their name's a little different, they don't put an S in, and we're not able to track.
That could be it.
And even Tarrant County College, right?
Yes. And, and.
Much less another school within the state of Texas.
Absolutely.
And then we don't get college or career ready, I guess, or whatever it is to determine.
Then you don't get the credit, if you will, for, for those students, and that's one of the very few, maybe the only one, but I'm going to yield to Kevin to answer that part, data sets that we cannot examine. Most data sets we can examine. We can ask for retesting of, or a review of some of our test data to the state, and they will do it. We can examine data sets. This data set is the one we cannot examine.
That is the, and that is the most challenging one. And so we, we feel like, and we've had some evidence from TCC, that's the, the piece that we're working on right now, that some students were missed in that process. Part of the challenge is not being able to see the students to where we can actually go in ourselves and start identifying, okay, well, this is why the student was missed or not missed, that type of thing. We've gained a little bit of access, and so we started on some sort of, or a little bit of analysis of it, but we're still not, we're still not quite there yet. As far as data missing, that's a big piece. The other, one that's a little bit challenging, maybe a little bit different realm is the military indicator. There hasn't really been any standard set as far as how we actually identify somebody and code them as a military readiness. If we call TEA, they basically tell us to do the best we can and just document what we did. The, the military won't give you that information, and so it's not like you can just go to the military and say, hey, give me the list of students that are military-ready or that are going into the military. So that one's been a little bit of challenging for kind of a different reason, not necessarily because we can't get a hold of the, like, the test data. Those are probably the two big ones, but our, our concern, as we've had talks internally, is that we don't know what's coming next year, and so there, there could be another data element out there in some fashion that if we don't have, if we don't have access to it, we can't examine it to actually understand how the, the rating was, the rating was calculated. So maybe go back, maybe go back to last year, the year, I think it was last year, I can't remember, lose track of time. A really good example of that on the opposite, opposite end of that was, if you'll remember, we had some writing, writing scores at short, when they fell short of being met standards, so there are going to be improvement required. But we could go in and we could see those data, and we found some students, hey, we think these students really should have been scored at a, at a passing rate or a passing level instead of failing the test. We resubmitted those scores during the appeals process, we got the scores back, ETS agreed with us that those students did pass, then we filed the appeal, and we could do all the calculations, we could see all the data, and we could do the calculations there, and we actually won that appeal, so that short wasn't improvement required. But if we can't see those data, then we can't, we can't work through that appeals process.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Those are very valid points, especially during this legislative session, as if there's something legally that needs to be changed, then we can push on that, and also it's a great opportune time to push on them for these things. So, very good. Are there other trustees, any other trustees with questions? So I have one request. Mr. Chapa?
It's, it's not really a question, it's more just comments and kudos for your department and, and really the staff of the AISD. As I noted last year, I, I wanted to point out the things from this report that I think speak very well to the things that we're doing in this district, and much of the data that you provided just now does exactly that. I'm glad you pointed out the, the large increases in growth with the ELL and sped students in many of these metrics. That's no easy task for any district to do, and we're accomplishing that, and we're also seeing across the board in some areas increases among many of our demographic categories, and, and so that is, is a huge achievement. Kudos to Ms. Powell and her staff for, again, maintaining the flow of money in, on the instructional front and keeping central administration expenses down. We're well below the state average on central administration, we have been for a long time, we continue to be, and I think that speaks very well to the way that this district approaches, prioritizing the people who are on the front lines of our district, working with students every day. I'm, I'm an attorney by trade, and so I kind of splice data differently than you might sometimes, and so I'm going to take a little liberty with this data to kind of reframe it in a thing, in a way that I think speaks very well also for the work that we're doing here. If you, if my math is right, and it might not be because I am an attorney, we have 30, we have 73 campuses, 73 campuses that were evaluated in terms of met standard or for distinctions. And if you look at the, the data, you know, our overall grade, and we've spent a lot of time on this, our overall grade under the new reporting thing was a C. But if 69 out of 73 campuses met standard, I mean, that's almost 95%. And so when you're dealing with a lot of the challenges that we do, we, we deal with in our district, and all the hard work that our students and teachers are putting in, to get 95% of our campuses to the state standard is an A in my book. And to get almost 40% of our campuses to earn at least one distinction, including some campuses that in the past have had some, some struggles, are earning distinctions, I think that that speaks volumes about how hard our students and teachers are working, and so I don't want that to go overlooked either, because depending on how you look at this data, we're either a C district, or we're knocking it out of the park with some students that are facing significant challenges at home, and we are closing those gaps, and so I wanted to point those things out.
Absolutely.
All right. Very good. Well-stated, well-stated, Mr. Chapa. Are there other, any other trustees with questions? Okay. And I, yeah, very well said, Mr. Chapa. I, I think that's, that, that different, different lens is perhaps something we can share with our, our delegation and perhaps our lieutenant governor and, and House leader as well, and the education committee, and it's legislative session, so let's just throw everything we can at them, because they're going to do it to us, so we, we need to advocate for our students. No, no, Mr. Hogg.
I get all the owners.
So I, I, I just, I have a question, I think, for Ms. Powell. Just out of all of the numbers, which it, it is astounding how, how well with you and everybody on your team that things are run so efficiently and effectively, one of the numbers that stuck out to me that seemed kind of out of whack was the extracurricular spend, that we're half of what the state spend is, when we, through our strategic plan and as a district, have such a high emphasis on extracurricular, co-curricular activities. How is it that we're still, with that, so much lower? What are those other districts doing or categorizing to make it out of whack like that?
I can't say specifically. I do think there is some room in here for different interpretations on how things are coded. We all in the, in the state, all the school districts, have to code all of our expenditures in accordance with TEA's definitions and guidelines for different functions and different object categories, and so there may be some variation in, in, in where districts code things. It may also be, quite honestly, that smaller districts, very, very small districts, that they are also, if they're operating a stadium or something of that nature, that, that, yeah, proportionately in their budget, those things represent a slightly larger.
Sure. Makes sense. All right. Very good. Thank you. And thank you for, for all of the, the information and the report during this public hearing. I do not see any cards indicating comments from the audience, so therefore, no other comments from trustees or questions, so the public hearing on the Texas Academic Performance Report is now closed. All right. Moving on, the, the next section on our agenda, sorry, hold on. Covered up my papers here. Yes, thank you. Is the open forum for agenda items, I do see one, one card this evening. This is a routine port, routine part of our, our agenda for regularly scheduled meetings. The segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to share their views with the trustees on items that are on the agenda. It is not intended to be a discussion or debate. Trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. Excuse me. Personnel matters are not appropriate subjects for open forum. I do have the one card. When, when your name is called, please step to the podium. You will have five minutes to speak. A lighted timer on the podium will assist you in pacing your presentation. A yellow light will illuminate when there's one minute left for you to complete your presentation. When the red light comes on, the buzzer sounds, please end your presentation. And that is Ms. Christina Blank. Yes. Representing UEA regarding board appreciation. Ms. Blank.
Well, you've covered my introduction. I was, I didn't write that in my speech, they said I had to say who I was, so you just did it for me. Thank you. There you go. Dr. Reich, member of the, members of the board, and Dr. Kavasas. I'm Christina Blank, the president of UEA Arlington, and I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I'm going to say a few words about Board Appreciation Month. Education calls for people who are dedicated to creating something for the future and putting themselves out there. They're not driven by profits, they're driven by need to make the world better for the next generation. To be on the school board, volunteering your time to create a vision, to have a better future for all involved in the district. The decisions you make are hard, and especially in a time where money is very slim and needs are very many. We are blessed here in Arlington, and we really are, that we have a board who actually listens to concerns and acts upon them. You have been very active in this district, not only in the events that happen in this district, in the many committees where our district listens to the voices in the community, but you also are very active in lobbying in Austin for those needs we have in education. And thank you so much for all that hard work. As UEA president and as a representative of many teachers and employees who work here in the district, we may not always agree on how those resources may be allotted or decisions made in the district, but I am proud to say that it has always been an open dialogue with goodwill and good intentions on both sides. I thank you for your service, for your commitment to education, and for your dedication to the enrichment of our future. Thank you so much for your time and everything you do. That's it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Blank. Appreciate that. All right. Next, we, we come to action items, and the item on the agenda this evening is consider the order of election for a school board. And this is regarding our election, we are in election season, so this is regarding our election for May 4th, 2019, and I will ask for a, a motion to support what this order of election is, that I will now read. Bear with me, it's a, it's a little lengthy. The order of election, a general election is hereby ordered to be held Saturday, May 4th, 2019, for the purpose of electing members of the Board of Trustees to the Arlington Independent School District to fill place numbers four and five. The main early voting polling site for all voters in the Arlington Independent School District, including the portion of the district that lies within the city of Arlington, the city of Delaware, Arlington Gardens, the Tarrant County portion of the city of Grand Prairie, and the town of Pantigo, will be at Tarrant County Election Center, 2700 Premier Street, Fort Worth, Texas, 76111. Between the hours of 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, beginning April 22nd, 2019, through April 30th, 2019, between the hours of 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM on Saturday, April 27th, 2019, between the hours of 11:00 AM and 4:00 PM on Saturday and on Sunday, April 28th, 2019, and between the hours of 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM on Monday and Tuesday, April 29th and April 30th, 2019. Applications for a ballot by mail for voters residing in the Arlington Independent School District shall be mailed, be mailed to early voting clerk, P.O. Box 961011, Fort Worth, Texas, 76161, or an email transmission of a completed scanned application for a ballot by mail containing an original signature can be emailed to votebymail, all one word, at tarrantcounty.com. Applications for a ballot by mail must be received no later than the close of business on Tuesday, April 23rd, 2019. The order of election may be amended at a later date due, at a later date to include early voting sites added or deleted due to joint elections with other political subdivisions. This is issued this 17th day of January, 2019. I will entertain a motion to support this order of election. Mrs. Mays?
Yes. If I could just do one point of clarification before I make a motion, just for the record, in the first sentence, you said, "for the purpose of electing members of the Board of Trustees," and I know you meant to say, "for the purpose of electing members to the Board of Trustees."
Oh. Very good. It's here in writing. Thank you.
Okay. I didn't know if that was important before I made a motion to approve this election of the school board.
Very good. So that's your motion then to approve the order?
I make a motion to approve the order of election for school board.
Very good. And Ms. Walton, your light was lit.
I would second that motion.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. So we have a, a motion by Mrs. Mays and a second by Ms. Walton to approve this order of election. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Moving on, the next item on our agenda this evening is any items that trustees would wish to be withdrawn. Moving on, the next item on our agenda this evening is any items that trustees wish to be withdrawn and considered separately from the consent agenda? Any items to be considered separate? All right. Seeing none, then we will move on to the consent portion of our meeting. Ms. Powell, please.
President Raish, board members, Dr. Kavasos, there are six bids on the agenda this evening for your consideration. And in each case, the administration is recommending the low bid and the bid that represents the best value to the district. We've also have donations to report this evening totaling $106,403. And that will bring our year-to-date total to $681,325.
Very good. Mr. Hibbs?
President Raish, I move that we accept the consent agenda.
Very good. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Second by Ms. Mays, motion by Mr. Hibbs, second by Ms. Mays. Any discussion?
It was Walton.
Oh, I went by the light here. All right, well. Everyone gets a second. Boy, we're in rare form this evening. All right. The second, please note, Ms. Walton. All right. Seeing no discussion, please vote on consent. Motion carries. Consent passes. All right. Moving on this evening, next is the discussion portion of our agenda. And it is on the 2014 Bond Program Update. Dr. Kavasos?
Thank you, President Raish. And this evening, we'd like to present the Bond Program Update. And Ms. Powell will lead us through that. A lot of work being done with the bond as we get to the tail end of the 14 bond. So, Ms. Powell.
Great. Thank you, President Raish, board members, Dr. Kavasos. Let's see here. There we go. As you know, we have a $663 million bond program. We are actually in your five now of this five-year program. We have, to date, we have available to us $63.9 million, which represents the dollars that we'll use to fund the projects in Phase Five. We have spent to date 504 million of the $663 million approved through the bond package. And we have contracts open for another $105.9 million. So we are closing in on the end here. You can see from this chart a breakdown of our available resources. We have spent, again, 75% of all of our resources. And we have contracts totaling, representing 16% of our total resources with 9% left to go. We do expect to end the program on time as of December, with the exception of two projects. That is the Fine Arts Center and the Athletics Complex that will be completed in summer of 2020. They are under construction now. And we expect to end the total project or total program within budget. Looking at each of the four areas that make up the bond program, in the Fine Arts area, we have spent roughly 74% of those resources. And we have another 4% on order. In the fall each year is when the Fine Arts Department assesses needs in individual campuses for orders from that year's allocation of bond funds. So they are identifying needs now, instruments and uniforms that will purchase with your Fives money from the bond, the Fine Arts portion of the bond program. And those bids will take place in probably January, February. We'll start bidding those things and then award the bids in March and make the purchases probably shortly after spring break. The other things that are priorities right now in the Fine Arts Department that have connections to the bond program are reviewing the applications that have been accepted for next year for Corey and Jones Academy. Those applications are actually due January 31st. So the department will review those and then recommend acceptance for those two programs. They, again, are assessing the needs for instruments and uniforms. And they're also will be planning for the curriculum for Grade Four at the two academies. So as we, as we grow into our two elementary academies and we add a grade each year, there's curriculum writing and training associated specifically with each new grade level. The work of the Fine Arts Center is continuing. And so the staff in the Fine Arts Department is engaged in that. And then they have begun work that will be funded really through, hopefully, what becomes the next bond program. And that is the design work around a junior high Fine Arts Dual Language Academy that, that we have announced we plan for gun junior high. In the area of safety, security and technology, we've spent 80% of those bond resources. And we have another 5% on open contracts right now and 15% available. And again, that 15% represents the Year Five allocation to the technology area. And so Mr. Branham and his team are, are planning in coordinating those expenditures for Year Five. And we'll be getting bids on those. Very simply, in this area, to highlight the classroom technology standards, we're almost finished with all the work that had been planned and committed with the bond program for this particular area. This includes an AV standard for projectors in all of our classrooms, teacher standard, which is a laptop and a docking station, and student standard. I believe the student standard work is completely finished at this point. I think the only thing here within classroom standards where we still have just a little bit of work to do is in the AV standard. And that should be finished by the end of the school year, early summer. In other areas related to technology, one of the big projects this year is digital signage. In all of our schools, each school will receive at least one flat monitor and will be placed in the very visible area, common area of the school, at the place of the principal's choosing with their input. And it's intended to be a communication enhancement for the campus and their community. And then our TI grants, to date, we've awarded $5.2 million of grants totaling, there are 75 grants totaling a million dollars have been awarded this year alone. And that's out of a total of 185 applications. So these are popular with our teachers. Just a sample of some of the different kinds of grants. A laser engraving program for an instructor at the CTC. And augmented virtual reality also for a course at the CTC. And then drones. And the drones, there were actually a number of schools that partnered on this and have, are using drones in various classrooms. And so just three, 75 different grants to highlight there. In the area of transportation, we've spent 77% of our bond resources that were identified for transportation. And we have 21% available. That 21% will be spent for the purchases we had planned for this, this fifth year of the bond program. To date, we've bought and received 99 buses. In Year Five, we plan to buy eight buses and seven special, eight regular ed buses and seven special ed buses. We've gotten quotes on these. And you should see these purchases likely at the, one of the next couple of board meetings. Terms of the white fleet, the vehicles that maintenance, security and various departments drive from the bond program, we have purchased 125 vehicles. 105 of those were replacements and 20 are additional vehicles to the fleet. And for Year Five, we have 25 replacements that we plan to order. Two of those were actually on the agenda this evening on the purchases over 50,000. And the Transportation Department has quotes that they have already received on the remaining 23 vehicles. And they are evaluating those quotes currently. In the area of facilities, we spent 75% of our bond resources allocated to facilities. We have another 18% on open contracts and 7% available. And that 7% is identified for expenditure for the Phase Five projects. So at the moment, we have a total of 91 projects, facility projects that are active in some phase. Seven of them are in design, nine are in bid, including three that the board awarded this evening. So we have three now that the next time we do this presentation, even a week and a half from now with CBOC, we'll move into the construction category. Construction, we have 30 active construction projects right now. And then we have 45 that are in the closeout phase for a total of 91. And when we say closeout, that's, that's the phase of work where we gather all of the documentation on manufacturer's warranties, all of the as-builds from contractors, reconcile all final payments and formally close out contracts. Looking at this by phases, Phase One, all the work is finished in terms of construction itself. We have projects that are still in the closeout phase. And we continue to work through those issues with the, the construction manager. And we have roughly half of, a little over half of all the projects from Phase One are formally closed and are completely finished. In Phase Two, we have several active projects going on. Arlington High, Morton, South Davis, Starett and Wood. The others are either completely closed or they are in that closeout stage. So we have several pictures here on this slide from Arlington High School. The picture on the left is the auditorium. So quite a transformation there with new seating and carpet. And the upper right, obviously, that's the front of the building where windows are going in. That work continues to progress. The photo on the lower right is actually in the old fieldhouse where that's being converted. This is a picture of a parking lot. This was actually taken in August, right about the time school started. So that's a major improvement to the parking situation and pavement there. This is a picture on the outside of Wood Elementary where we are beginning to erect the new library. And that will be ready in August by the time school starts. Phase Three, you see that we still have, we have several projects in construction. A number of the ones that are in construction are just on, on the verge of moving into that closeout phase. The work is very close to being done. We're completing some punch list items. And so the next time you see this, I expect that the only project that will still be under construction in this phase is the Fine Arts Center. So several pictures here from Butler. Pictures on the upper right, there's a STEM lab. And the lower right-hand corner is a strings room. And the large photo on the left is a regular classroom with new carpeting. This is Wembish Elementary. Look down the hallway. And one thing I'll point out is how bright that hall is. There's new flooring there, new lights, new ceiling tiles even. The light fixtures are new. And so this shows you what, what a fairly inexpensive investment in lighting and flooring can do in terms of the overall appearance of the entire space. It's very, very nice. The upper right-hand picture is in the office area with new carpeting and new arrangement. And then the lower right is the library at Wembish. We have included in Phase Three of our work, our tracks for our junior high schools. And we have completed the track work. This is at Bailey Junior High. And this is a picture of the new track at Young. All of the junior highs have also received field improvements. So new sod fields. And in many ca, most cases, we actually had to move the field a little bit to accommodate the track. I'll also point out here on the right-hand side, a picture of bleachers. So all of our junior high schools receive new bleachers as part of this work. So these are ADA accessible and a significant improvement. And this is a picture, once again, we've seen a couple of pictures since last spring, last fall, of the new turf at the Workman Field. It was donated by the Jones family. And the resurfaced track that the district paid for. We also, through the NFL and the Jones family donation and Hellis Construction, received new lighting here and a new scoreboard. On the Phase Four projects, all of this work is under construction at the moment, including this photo. This is of the Athletics Complex as part of Phase Four. The Fine Arts Center is part of Phase Three. They're being constructed at the same time though, under a single contract. This is an aerial photo of the site. And it's just a tick dated. Because today, if we were to have a drone image, we would see that the north parking lot is also been poured. The parking lot in the lower right-hand corner is the south. That's Division Street just below that. The two buildings will sit on the left-hand side of this image with the Athletics Complex being the southern building and then the Fine Arts Center being on the north side of that. We've had quite a bit of rain, as we all know, in the last couple of months. And so our contractors are working feverishly now to kind of recover from that. But things are moving along quite well. On the right-hand side of the picture, you can see the new street, the new drive that has taken shape through here. And this drone image was taken by our contractor. They were giving us updates and are giving us drone images about once a month. We now have available time-lapse cameras. I'm about to show you, try to show you a clip of that in just a moment. So those are, will be posted and available on our website at any time for individuals to view. This is a ground-level shot drilling piers on that site. That work has begun. And this is a, an image of that north parking lot just after it was poured. And again, if you go to our website on the bond page and you look at either the Fine Arts Center page or the Athletics Complex page, you'll find a link you can click on to see a time lapse of construction on the site. So we have a real quick little snippet that Ryan Pierce prepared for us on the next slide. And so, right, let me just tap it. There we go. Yeah. And if you watch it for very long, you'll see it rain. And you'll see it dry out and then it will rain again. But Ryan is monitoring this and updating this on our website each week. We'll put a time span out there for people to watch, so. And I guess we're going to do it again. There we go. All right. Great. And so another highlight for us, we have, the board and the city council have approved an interlocal agreement. So that the, and under the terms of the agreement, the city will actually contribute a million dollars towards the construction of the Athletics Complex, specifically helping to fund some features to the naditorium that will allow the city and to attract some large swim events, such as USA Swim events or even college swim events. The, the investment will help us pay for additional deck space and additional seating and actually some food prep area to support those large events. And so the benefit, obviously, to the city in attracting those kinds of events is they will generate additional sales and hotel taxes. The city then will also have some scheduled use of the warm-up pool in our Athletics Complex. And they will pay us a total of $500,000 over several years for using that space when we don't need it. We will use the warm-up pool during the day for swim lessons. And so before and after those times, we actually can make the pool available, that particular pool available to the city. As our competition, our swim teams will primarily be in the competition pool, not in the warm-up pool. These are several pictures from Lamar High School. They are undergoing their condition improvements. The photo on the left is a hallway where, we have some halls in Lamar that have a mirror light surface on them that has, has a, has had a very dingy look to it. And it's been And it, it's been a, just a rather unsightly aspect of the building. And so to replace it, you can't, you can't paint it. You have to completely replace the wall to improve the situation. You also see new ceiling tiles through here, new lighting. So there again, it, it really brightens the whole space. The upper right-hand photo is an AP music theory class. You'll see computers around the classroom and also piano, and there's new carpeting in there. And then the lower right picture, they're putting some new paneling on the outside of the press box at the stadium. Also, as a part of this particular phase of work is some improvements made to what used to be the old Venture High School on West Arkansas. It's where we will house our Arlington College and Career High School. The district actually enhanced what we've had available to us in the bond program for this particular building. We transferred some surplus general fund monies to the local construction fund, and we're using those funds to renovate the building for the new early college high school program. Again, applications for this program are due January 31st, and you can find information about it on our website. The new early college high school will open in August of 2019, and this again is in partnership with TCC, just like our, our first early college high school is. And this is some work, or a couple of pictures of the work taking place there. It's very much in demo phase at the moment, but that work will progress quickly. And weather is not much of a factor in a project like this. I mean, there's some impact, but we, we have plenty we can do inside here. The phase five projects, you can see these are mostly still in design and bid phases. Again, several of the projects we brought to you this evening are, are in this phase and will now begin to move over to the construction phase. And then we will be bringing some additional ones to you in the next month or so to eventually get everything over in the construction phase. We have pretty much just left in design phase administrative offices and warehouses. And those are, that's more specific work that we will be doing. And again, we anticipate all of that will be finished by the end of the year. In terms of hub participation, to date, nineteen percent of the expenditures from the facility portion of the bond program have been to hub subcontractors. And we've continued our work with Akari Project Management, and they have assisted us in hosting two events this fall. One was a Contractor Symposium that the district has, has held one of these before we start work on each phase throughout the bond program. And then another one was a matching event where we allowed any contractor, general contractor who wanted to come and set up a table at the PDC to do so on one evening. And then we put information out across various avenues, through various avenues, and, and through multiple organizations inviting subcontractors to come in and meet with those general contractors. And it was, it's just a good way to help connect subcontractors with general contractors. Some of this will begin to benefit us more in future construction projects. But it, it, they, both of these events were very well attended. Had a hundred and seventy-five attendees at both of these functions. And again, the Contractor Symposium was more specific to the work that we're doing in phase five, highlighting the projects. All of the architects were there, and we make a small presentation about the work itself and some general timelines. And then the architects have tables, and general contractors can go and visit with them and actually see the designs so they can determine if they want to bid on particular projects. We always pass out a bid schedule at these events, and we've been told numerous times that the contractors really like having that schedule for that, basically a one-year look ahead on when we're going to bid things, because it helps them target their work, because there's lots of work out there. And it helps them plan for what they, what they can bid for us, what they have the capacity to bid, and helps them target our, our work. The other event, as I mentioned, was a, we called it, it was a speed meeting. In some cases, you, you rotate people. We were able to just let people come in and at, at their leisure move from one contractor to the next. But we had ten general contractors who came in and set up tables and met with folks for that. There were eighty-one people who attended that and, and were able to connect with different contractors. So that was a, a very good thing, too. The, we've started work planning for the next bond program. We've had several conversations about that in the fall, a full-blown presentation on the needs we've identified. And then the board has adopted a charge to a capital need steering committee. That committee has thirty-seven people on it. They held their first meeting last week. And they have another meeting this upcoming week, and they will actually host their first community dialogue, which is an opportunity for people to give input on our identified needs and, and program preferences on February 5th. So information about that will be posted in the coming days on our website. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much for so much information, Ms. Powell. Great update. There are trustees with questions. First up is Mrs. Mays.
Thank you, President Reich. Thank you, Mrs. Powell, for the information that you've given us. I'll make my comments fairly brief. One thing that I've noticed that I think is very important, having participated in a couple of bonds that we've been able to successfully pass with our taxpayers here in the community, is the full transparency that I believe the district has given on how the spun, how the funds have been spent, where they've been spent. A couple of things you said that I would like to point out, particularly as we are putting together our community members in the consideration of another bond in the future, is the fact that we have, we're expected to complete our construction projects on time. I think that's huge. Anybody who's paid attention to the construction industry over the last several years should understand that, that this is a very good thing, which I think speaks volumes of the relationships that we've built with our contractors, with the district, in addition to also being able to finish within budget. Once again, inflation, prices of construction, competition for contractors, really could have had a huge impact. I'm very thankful for Watchful Eye, that our finance department keeps on finding ways to continue to save money. And when things are outside of our control, for instance, inflation on construction materials, there's other ways that y'all have tried to make sure that we have cut, to make sure that we have spent our money within the parameters that we set forth that allowed us to pass a successful bond. And I appreciate that very much, and I'm sure that our taxpayers do as well. And I know our students will as all of these things are completed. I have to admit, when I drive by or see the building for the, our athletics center and our fine arts center, I just, I, I picture all of the students that will be able to go and perform, and the community come and watch, and then where they're going to go on in their lives. And that's probably just my emotion as my last child is getting ready to graduate. But I want to see, I just want to see that growth, because we do things for now, they're happening now, but the impact that we're really going to see is going to be in the future as these children continue to matriculate, for instance, our fine arts programs and so forth. So I'm just very, very excited to continue to see that. My last comment that I wanted to make was on our hub participation, something that, to me personally, I, I think has been a strong point and the progress that I believe that the district has made in trying to assure, getting that information out to those hub groups, letting them know how they can do business with the district, putting forth that hand that says, "We want to allow you an opportunity, an equal opportunity, to participate in what's going on in our community." And a lot of those are community members, so once again, we're helping to give back and put money back in our community in addition to what we're doing for our students. So that's really all I want to say, but I just wanted to make those comments. Once again, I think the district has done an amazing job with transparency, the spending of the money, and the oversight. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Mays. Ms. Walton?
Thank you, Dr. Reich. Well, I just, ditto what Mrs. Mays just said. You know, we're kind of on the downhill, and things are still rolling very well, and it hasn't been easy. And it's been a lot of hours for your department and also for Mr. Horn back there. We appreciate all the due diligence that all of, all of our staff has done towards this. It's, it's, it's going to be great for our kids, and it's, it's wonderful. I hope we can get to the end and, you know, be right on the money.
We do, too.
So thank y'all very much. Thank y'all for your hard work.
Very good. Great, great comments. Oh, yeah, your mic is off. There's nothing we can do. Go right ahead. No, I, I just don't touch anything. Go right ahead.
I, I drive, I drive out to the Fine Arts Center quite often, and I'm so glad to see that the wonderful live oak tree is still there. It's all fenced off, they've pruned it up. It's starting to look like a really nice tree. It didn't look that way in the beginning, and so, and all the other, there's some nice pecan trees down through there, too. So thank whoever is taking care of the trees. It means a lot to me.
Be careful, they can still die.
Yes.
All of that dirt moving around can still kill them.
Yes. Keep positive thoughts, but yes, years after the construction's completed, they may meet their demise. Well, I, well, two things. Great comments by both trustees. I, I thank Ms. Walton on your last comment. There was kind of a gasp, but don't say anything, don't jinx anything, because we're not done yet. No, no, no. So I, it, it's tremendous, tremendous work. Thank you to, to you guys and, and everybody on, on the staff. It's, it's fun to be able to sit here, and, and internally, I ingest, I look at, oh, there's only ninety-one projects now. You had over a hundred at one point, so what's ninety-one? It's just, it's a phenomenal number, ninety-one. Oh, my gosh. And you've, you've handled more than that at any one time. It, it is absolutely phenomenal, the, the amount of heavy lifting that, that goes on, sometimes in front of the scenes, but many behind the scenes. And with the market fluctuations that Ms. Mays kind of referred to, I know that was very trying, probably year two into this. And it's a very, very good feeling for everybody to know that we're, we're coming in as, as promised to the voters. So thank you. It is really exciting to see what will be happening for our students in the future. I'd be remiss if I don't comment on with the, the Fine Arts Center, the athletics complex, specifically with an auditorium, the, the public-public partnerships, something that we're all very supportive of, of our utilization of tax dollars and the opportunities that we'll realize for our city as a whole, and as well as for us and our students and the opportunity and, and the revenues that we'll personally receive, whatever those determine to be as far as rental of the facilities. It's just really phenomenal. There's one, I guess, one question that I have to ask. Is there any, any projects that you anticipate not being done on time or that are not on time as of right now that, that we should be aware of, or right now, everything's okay?
We expect that everything will reach substantial completion by December nineteen. You know, we mentioned the closeout phase, and that's a paperwork phase. And so some of those projects may reach substantial completion in, in the fall. And as we approach December nineteen, they may still, they'll be in their closeout phase, but the work will be done. And then we, as we all know, the Fine Arts Center and the athletics complex wrap up next summer. That's been planned. So they're not, they're not late. As long as it's stock bringing.
Right.
They're not late.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure that's giving them a bit of angst. Well, that, that, that's wonderful. I, I'm excited to see what the future holds. Thank you for bringing up the reminder on that we do have another bond that we're working on right now. It is tremendous to see the, the district transform so, so immensely from where it was to now with this enactment of the 2014 bond. And it's just, it's even more exciting to me to know that, and we are, we're still going. And there's, there's so much involved with this, and yet we're still going, and so many more opportunities yet to come for our students. The, the last thing, I, I have a, a question, maybe a request with regards to hub participation at Akari. It's, I, they've, I think, fit very well with the district, done great things. Thank you for showing the different examples. If it's not on the plan already, which it probably is, I'd, I'd like to request that at, at some point, they come to the board and give a presentation, not just to reiterate what, what you went over, but as well as the, the critique of the, the district and the process. I, I know it's going to be very positive. It would just be great for the board to, to hear that as a whole. All right. Last call. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Powell. All right. We will now move, the next section is the open forum for non-agenda items. I don't see any cards. All right, so we will move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Kavassos?
Thank you, President Reich, and just to share some information of recent kind of accomplishments. In December, Venture High School had a wonderful graduation ceremony of twelve students. Every month, they do a graduation ceremony, and this, they were celebrating their graduate number five thousand since their existence. And thirty-one years in existence, and Venture continues to be of service to our students. Thank you to the Venture staff, Greg Meeks, the principal, and everyone involved, and most especially the students, as they demonstrate persistence and, and continued effort to, to reach their goal, which is to graduate from high school. So very proud of the five thousand graduate. Before winter break, many of our schools benefited from generosity from our community, and there's so many different organizations. So this is just a very, very small sample. A couple of examples, Arlington Sunrise Rotary giving every Thornton Elementary student Christmas stocking. Lamar Baptist Church and North Davis Church teaming up to make sure all Wimbush students went home with age-appropriate books and fleece blankets. Thank you to all our civic and nonprofit organizations for their generosity. There's so many. These are just two examples, but the love they demonstrate for our students makes a huge difference in the culture of our school. We appreciate it. Next, our, our schools continue to be recognized by the City of Arlington's Kindness Initiative. Thank you to our teachers and administrators who encourage kindness throughout the schools, and to the city for recognizing even the smallest acts of kindness by our youngest students. So far, students from Thornton, Corey, Dunn, Young have been able to be recognized by the kindness award. So thank you for the city, in particular, for that initiative and for the recognition to continue to promote kindness across our community. Couple of reminders, our special program application deadline is coming up, January 31st. There's still opportunities for parent information sessions and for students. We have more opportunities today than we've ever had in Arlington ISD, and so we keep adding to that. I encourage everyone who is interested to look at the website and get more information. And I also want to thank our communications and marketing department for their work in promoting and getting the message out for our special programs, and so you see some examples there. And finally, I hope everyone enjoys some time of reflection and participation during the weekend of Advancing the Dream, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration, that really runs Friday through Monday, starting with an awards banquet, multicultural festival, step show in the weekend, plenty of opportunities for this year's theme, Building Harmony and Celebrating Diversity. And thank you ahead of time to every student and teacher and community member that is involved with our MLK Weekend Celebration. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Kavassos. Are there any trustees that have reports or anything to share? Mr. Hope, trying to get to you. Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, Dr. Reich. First off, I'd just like to thank, a little over a week ago, my father passed away. And I just have to personally thank all the reach out from so many people in this district. We talk about it being a family, and it is. So I'm just going to leave it at that. You know what I mean? My dad feel better. We get to talk about the idiots down in Austin is what he'd say. So let's talk about, we're in a legislative session. We have a lot going, coming up, and the, the folks down in Austin are at least saying the right things right now. And so from an uplifting standpoint, they are making the conversation. And so from an uplifting standpoint, they are making the conversations and discussions about how they fix school finance, how they fix school finance reform, money for teachers, all those things. And I appreciate all the words, but I always tell everyone, let's always be cautious and let's make it through the 140 days before we start counting the reforms they're supposedly making. So I appreciate all my colleagues, the government's committee, Ms. Powell, and our entire team that are working on our legislative. We've got some important dates coming up from the district. We've got, you know, we will be down there the February 20th as a group to, on our day to kind of blast ourselves as a board. The 26th, we'll be tending another event down there for Tasby to Lobby on behalf of all Texas, all school kids in Texas, and then with the chamber on the 6th and 7th to help make sure the entire Arlington is positioning that. We also, one of the key things we'll be fighting for, many items on our agendas, but TRS Active Care opt-out. We're making some traction on that, and we should have some announcements coming pretty soon about how our official battle will be going on that because we know it's a key challenge of what we're doing to fix health care for our teachers. Because we can do all we want and fix all the different pieces for all of our, I say teachers, all of our staff as a whole. But the turnover rate we have for security guards and other people is a major issue for other employments because we don't have insurance that's comparable, and we are losing employees because of that. So we have many items, more items will come about. Sometimes a good defense also is good offense in the legislative session. We will be keeping people updated. Always, we can look at any of our social medias, and I know this whole board's committed to helping post that and helping spread the message because, as a speaker said earlier, I don't know who was talking about it, so much of our job is focused on what happens in Austin because so much of what happens in our local school districts is driven by Austin, more than what I'd like to say has even been happening in my 10 years on this board. So I appreciate all the work from the colleagues. We've got less than 140 days now, which is good. The shorter it gets, the better it gets and more exciting it gets, but we've still got a long day. I do commend the leaders of Texas for speaking about the right things. Now it's about time they're doing it. They're talking about school finance. The Speaker of the House is really focused and is number one priority issue, and I really appreciate that. And I have to commend our local delegation for working together, for communicating. It's the most I've ever seen a local delegation talk with each other and communicate. So I truly appreciate all the work and all of our colleagues and all of us that will be working on this during this legislative session. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Mrs. Mays?
Thank you, President Reich. First of all, I just want to say thank you to Food Services, to students and staff throughout the district, through our assisting organizations as in UEA, for all the thanks for Board Appreciation Month. I think myself and my colleagues really appreciate it, but it also continues to just remind us of the village that it does take to successfully educate all of our students. But I do want to say thank you for all of the well wishes and the kind words for our volunteerism here. Also, in acknowledgement of Martin Luther King's celebration for his birthday this weekend, repeat what Dr. Cavassos said, please get out if you can make any of these events. It's going to be a great weekend. It always is. Please go out and support the community, support the students that have worked hard to participate. And then I have to say one of my Martin Luther King quotes, which I think fits very well into the legislation session that we are currently in. And he said, "We may all have come on different ships, but we're in the same boat now." And what that means is for public education, it doesn't matter your nationality, it doesn't matter if you're rich, if you're poor, if English is your second language. If you are being educated here in Texas in public schools, you need to make your voice heard during this legislative session to make sure that our students can continue to be successful, to make sure that we still have a population of people that want to be teachers because the state of Texas appreciates our teachers in the classroom and what they do, in the words of the great Martin Luther King. Thank you.
Very well said, Mrs. Mays. Absolutely agree. Are there any other trustees that have reports? All right. And just to echo what Dr. Cavassos mentioned on the kindness initiative with the city, was so far able to attend two of those rallies and presentations. Dr. Von Peak is doing a great job heading up that commission. Former trustee Gloria Penya is also assisting him and really advocating and helping, highlighting what our students are doing, what our schools are doing. It's a significant plug-in for our overall community. So we have a very loving and kind student body, a very loving and kind district, hence moving forward to a great community. So thank you for bringing that up. Madam Secretary, do we have any items to consider?
No president.
That's fine, you can just...
We are 0 for 100. No, President Reich.
There was one. It was your request on having Speaker.
Yes.
Yes, President Reich. We have requested to have the group Akari come and give a presentation and an update on their relationship with the district and items that they have found regarding hub participation.
Yes, when it is appropriate. Okay, very good. All right, next item on our agenda to consider is an employee grievance hearing. This is to consider a public complaint of Tanya Celestial filed under Board Policy DGBA Local. Consistent with Board Policy DGBA Local, this grievance hearing is being heard in a closed meeting. So at this time, I do ask everyone who is not party to the hearing or is not going to participate in the hearings to please exit this chamber. And also, at this time, the board is going to continue in closed session under Sections 551.071, under a brief recess for consultation with our legal counsel. Thank you. It's 9:46 PM right now. Okay, the time is 11:12. We are back.
We're in an open session now.
Yeah, we need to open the doors, okay. So closed session ended at 11:12. We're now back, called back to order, open session this grievance hearing. And I would entertain a motion at this time?
President Reich, I move that we affirm the decision.
Okay.
I move that we affirm the decision reached by the administration.
Second. All right. So we have a motion by Mr. Chapa, a second by Mr. Hibbs, to uphold administration's decision. Is there any discussions? Raise your hand if there's discussion. No? All right, then we will vote. All trustees that vote in favor of the motion on the table, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? Nay? Hearing none, this motion carries unanimously. That concludes the hearing. It's 11:13.